All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step to the podium and request permission. I'll introduce the board. On my far right is Mark Finner, a voting member. Coming in is Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy, chair. We hope James Morse, vice chair, is coming, Tony Petucci, and Ashley DiMello, office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state's zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on each application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and speak into the microphone. It will not amplify your voice and record audio for FCTV viewers. And we also have a quick couple of minutes before we start. If there's anybody from the public that wants to make a public comment about anything but what's on our agenda tonight, anybody want to come up? Or all set? So for tonight, our zoning administrator is out. She's on leave for the month of June, so we respectfully are requesting a continuation on each application tonight. And so that's how we're starting. So first, at bat, we have 85 Winslow Road, Clements.
Okay, this is application 028 of the year 2025. Douglas C. Clements has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A, 246.6B, and 240-11.3A4 of the zoning bylaw of the town of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing detached garage exceeding lot coverage by structure. Property again is located at 85 Winslow Road, and that's in North Falmouth. The property is located in an RB zoning district. The application again is for a special permit or permits under 240-10.2A, 246.6B, and 240-11.3A4. Now, the section 246.6B has to do with, you need a special permit for accessory structure or a garage that's going to exceed 900 square feet, and this one does. The existing garage is 433 square feet. It has a one-car garage and a work area. The proposal is for a building 1,008 square feet, two-car garage with an attached workshop. The property is located in Fiddler's Cove Coastal Pond Overlay District. The lot is 16,151 square feet in a district currently requiring 40,000. The street frontage is 110 feet in a district currently requiring 100 feet. Winslow Road at this location is a public right-of-way. Existing lot coverage by structure is 18.1%. The proposal is to increase it to 21.7%, thereby exceeding the 20% limit and requiring a special permit to exceed lot coverage by structure. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is currently 27.7%. The proposal is to increase it to 31.2%. It's within the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. The house on this lot conforms to zoning. There are no nonconformities with the house. The garage, however, does have one existing nonconformity, that is, the easterly sideline is only 5.8 feet in a district which requires 10 feet, so it's the garage that's not conforming. I have no information in the file about the height of either the existing garage or the proposal, so perhaps the applicant will tell us. The comments, engineering, they note that there are several encroachments, I think, along the street that have to be dealt with. They also recommend stormwater runoff be considered and erosion and sediment control. The board of health has no concerns, because this just doesn't involve a septic system. Conservation commission, no concerns. The water department says if necessary to provide water service to the new garage, it will require a 1-inch PE water service. Fire and building have no comments. There are no letters in opposition or in support.
Madam Chair, just to disclose, upon review of the application, I noticed that my brother Bruce was the architectural design for Mr. Clements' project. I have no input of my brother's business, and I quite honestly wasn't even aware that he had done this design until I reviewed the application. So I just wanted to make sure I disclosed that, make sure it's okay with you to proceed or Mr. Clements.
Is that okay with you?
I have no objection.
Is it okay with you?
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thanks for your time, first of all. The proposal is pretty straightforward. The missing information regarding the current structure height of the detached garage is 12 feet. In the plans, it shows the proposed garage to be 21 feet.
It's 12?
12.
Oh, okay.
Only 12 feet. Just a few things to note. The project itself does not create any new nonconformities. In fact, it creates a little bit more distance on the eastern side of the property than is currently, albeit a quite small one, measured in inches, but it will not increase the nonconformity that's currently there. There'll be no change to any paved lot coverage, currently at 9.5%. Commensurate with other two-car garages in the neighborhood, the footprint of the elevation that faces the road itself will not be changed in size. They'll still be looking at the same width structure. The only thing they'll notice that's different from the road is the roof line. That will be the significant change. As mentioned, my lot coverage is currently 18.1%. I'm seeking a special permit to go to 21.7% with the new garage and increase the impervious lot coverage from 27.7% to 31.2%, as you've mentioned. And it's really the crux of the, I have no intention to add water to the new structure at this point, so for the water department's concerns, I do understand that if I do run water to the new structure, I will be required to increase the supply line to 1 inch, and at that point, I have two options, either to supply it 1 inch to the home and supply the home from there, the garage from there, or run a separate line to the garage. Both have to be 1 inch to conform. I've spoken to the water department and told them I don't have plans at this point to put water to the structure, but if I do in the future, I'd have to apply and get that, I'd have to upgrade that part of the system. As for the engineering's concern, I'm not, I understand the public right-of-way process and what's required. I bought the property 17 years ago. Everything that is in the public right-of-way was there. I haven't changed a thing to it, and I understand pre-existing does not necessarily make it conforming. But one thing that's significant to the public right-of-way, encroachment with the wall that's there, it's super low. It's only like 18 inches tall, and there's a massive rock that is, basically dictates where this wall is. Two things, if I did somehow be required to remove the wall to be conformant with the public right-of-way, I'm not sure how I would go about it with that rock and still not have my, I'd have to build some sort of retaining wall, and that would, in order to be compliant, I'd have to do it all the way up to part of an existing driveway that's in front of the house. So I understand the desire to be conformant with the public right-of-way, but I don't see any practical way to go about it. The rock is 13 feet long and 6 feet across. It's massive, so.
It's pretty big.
I understand the concern, and I have every intention to try and comply, but I just don't see a practical way to do it.
You just need to get a license for the wall from the selectman.
So I can apply for a license for the wall that's in the public right-of-way? Okay, that sounds like something that, way easier than moving that rock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The engineer always reports encroachments that he observes.
Understood.
Doesn't mean, we don't have necessarily control over that, but you go to the selectman and get a license, and then if they say you can keep it, you keep it. We don't care.
Okay.
Rock's probably connected to all of North Falmouth.
It could crumble the whole road.
Right, no, it's pretty big.
All right.
All right, that would be obviously something I would have to do to address that.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any questions? Go for it.
Thank you. I have no questions or concerns.
Any questions, Frank?
No, I went out there, it was a couple of weeks ago now, but I saw everything that I need to see. I don't have any questions. This seems like a reasonable request.
No questions. Obviously, it's a nice upgrade. It's probably ready for it. The old garage is looking a little dated.
Everyone will be appreciative of the improvement.
Yes.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Nice workshop. Somewhere to go in your spare time.
Yeah.
I'm all good.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to comment on this? All set? Everybody up here good?
We have a continuation to July 17th.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to continue to July 17th for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none? Great, thank you.
I have a question about the continuation. Having made my presentation and having no objections, what does the continuation entail when that?
It'll be quick, I would think.
Okay.
That would be my take on it.
And what was the date?
July 17th.
July 17th, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next at bat, we have.
The question, it was not clear, so questions can be asked when he comes back.
Yeah, either one.
Yeah.
We have 28 Boston.
Just a second. You can go. I got him.
Oh, you got it? Okay.
This is application 018 of the year 2025. James R. and Kathy M. Dooley. They've applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A of the code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw, to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at the subject property, which is 28 Boston Street, Falmouth, Massachusetts. The zoning district here is RC. The special permit being asked for is under section 240-10.2A to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The existing single-family dwelling is a three-bedroom at 1,269 square feet. The proposal is a single-family dwelling, four-bedroom, at 1,252 square feet. There's a flood zone, AE 12. The lot size is 4,800 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires 40,000. The frontage on the street is 60 feet in a zoning district that currently requires 100 square feet, uh, feet, rather. Boston Street is a public right-of-way at this particular location. The lot coverage by structure exists at 26.4%, which is above the limits of the zoning bylaw. It will be slightly reduced to 26.1%, but they do need the special permit, well, it exceeds the zoning bylaw. The average in the neighborhood is 22.4%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving, currently 32%. Will be increased to 39.9%. The limit is 40, so it's pretty close to 40. The setbacks on this structure, we have a couple of nonconformities. The east or setback on the street is 10.7, 10.7 feet. That is, does not conform. The east is 7 feet, the west is 11 feet, and the north is, which is the backyard, is 25.4 feet. The seven-foot setback on the east is, also does not conform. The proposed, the height of the proposed building is 33 feet 11, 33 feet 8 inches, which is within the 35-foot limit of the zoning bylaw. Engineering has advised us by referral that a driveway permit will be needed. Also, we're to consider stormwater runoff, dry wells for roof runoff, and erosion and sediment control. The board of health has advised us that the property is on the sewer, so they have no concerns. Conservation has issued a negative request for determination of applicability, so it's outside their jurisdiction. The water department recommend, or requests an upgrade of the water service to 1-inch PE with a meter in the house. Wastewater has no concerns because it's on the sewer building, no concerns fire, no concerns. We have two letters in support.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for that, reading that into the record. For the record, Kevin Clower, attorney here in town, representing Jim and Kathy Dooley, the owners of 28 Boston Street. I am joined tonight by Tim Santos of Merrill Engineering. The Dooleys are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling. So 28 Boston Street is located at the southern end of Maravista. It's 4,800-square-foot lot, which is pretty typical for the area, and it's in the RC zoning district. And as Mr. Duffy noted, it is in the AE 12 flood zone. Presently, it is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Total footprint is 26.4% lot coverage, and that is nonconforming. Front yard setback is 10.7, where 25 is required. Side yard setback to the east is 7 feet, where 10 feet is required. And the lot coverage by structure is 26.4, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. So the applicant has owned this property for the last 17 years or so, and they're now seeking to make this their primary residence. So the house needs repairs and upgrades cosmetically and structurally. And given the scope of their desired renovation and its location within an AE 13 flood zone, that work would necessitate compliance with flood zone standards, meaning an actual elevation of the structure. Given its current condition, that doesn't make much sense, so what they're proposing is to raise the existing and rebuild a new dwelling in compliance with those requirements. So pursuant to the building code and FEMA requirements, they must raise the structure such that all habitable space and mechanicals are at least 1 foot above the flood zone elevation. It's an AE 13 in this area, so that requires applicants to raise about 3 to 4 feet above the existing grade. The proposed dwelling provides parking on-site, which is currently within the road layout. It is nonconforming, the nonconforming lot coverage by structure is marginally improved. It's reduced from 26.4 down to 26.1. The nonconforming setbacks are improved. The front yard setback is improved from 10.7 to 14.5, and the side yard nonconforming setback is eliminated as it's improved to 11 feet. The proposed bridge height is 33 feet 8 inches, which is below the 35 allowed, and again, will comply with those FEMA requirements. Due to the existing nonconformities, this requires a special permit pursuant to 240-10.2A. That section states that pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, compares views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. A number of existing nonconformities are improved or eliminated, so the lot coverage by structure and front yard setback are both improved, the side yard setback to the east is eliminated as, and there's no effect on the views and vistas from the public ways. This is consistent with the neighborhood, as I will elaborate shortly. Although we did not include a special permit application under 240-11.3A4 for lot coverage by structure, because this proposal remains slightly over 25%, I wanted to also review those requirements to establish that we did take those into consideration and that this is very much in compliance with the neighborhood. So under that section, lot coverage by structure may exceed 20%, and you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts of views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, there's no impact of views and vistas in public ways. Although the building is larger, it's very similar to a number of nearby homes. It is on sewer, which allows for four bedrooms by right, so there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. And as to size and fit with the neighborhood, we submitted a lot comparison worksheet for nearby properties, looking at 37 homes within a 300-foot radius. As proposed, this is below the average footprint, and it's certainly not out of character in terms of the gross flow area. It's very similar in size to the home permitted by this board and constructed within the last two years directly next door at 24 Boston. It's worth noting that Maravista, and especially this area of Maravista, is rapidly changing. It's arguably the area most affected by the changes to the flood maps a few years ago, and we're seeing many houses going through a similar process. And while changes scary, it should be applauded, because the owners are doing what we should want them to do. There was a question presented at the initial meeting, whether a dwelling could be raised and rebuilt without coming into, fully into compliance with the zoning bylaw. The literal language of the bylaw speaks to that. 240-10.2A 3B states that the change, alteration, extension, or reconstruction of a structure may be allowed as maintaining or lessening any nonconformity without having to meet existing dimensional requirements. There was an update to our bylaw at the November town meeting that clarified that further, which says specifically, "Single and two-family residential structures. Zoning bylaws adopted or amended shall not apply to the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure that does not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure. Where the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change increases the nonconforming nature of the structure, that exemption shall apply where the ZBA finds that it is not substantially more detrimental." So the Dooley's proposal represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions for the applicants and either eliminates or improves the existing nonconformities. There's no new dimensional nonconformity created, there's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbenefit the benefits of outlined. I believe this meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A, 240-11.3A4, although we're not applying under that, and also 240-12.1E. For those reasons, I would ask that you grant the special permit, and I'll of course be happy to address any questions the board may have at this time.
Mark, you want to start off?
I see you moved the stake to the proper location.
I didn't.
Goes to show you what one stake can do. And actually, on the right side of the house, the offset wasn't marked, but it's marked now. So I'm fine, but I wasn't going to hobble around there with my tape measure and do the math, so I'm just going to request an ASBILT on the foundation, because I'm still a little dubious of your numbers, but I was certainly correct in my first assessment, and I don't think it's too much to ask for an ASBILT, especially when you're as tight as you are here.
We'd be happy to agree to that. And I don't know if you saw it, Mr. Finner, but we did supply a staking plan as well. I thought that might be helpful.
Yeah, I went out and saw it, and I have pictures of the last one, so like I said, whatever it measured out, 43 feet or something, it just, the math didn't work. I'm good, like I said, I'm just going to ask for an ASBILT.
No, and we'd be happy to agree to that as a condition.
Attorney Clower, could you just pull up the front elevation, just so folks here and at home could see it?
This would be the front elevation here in the upper left-hand corner.
No, a nice update. I don't have any concerns. I appreciate you walking us through it and on with Frank's information, so I'm good.
Frank, you have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to just clarify a couple of things. Mr. Clower, I think I reported to the board and the audience here that the current westerly side is 11 feet, and, but I'm looking at the plan that you submitted, and it's not clear what the proposed building is going to be. It's either 11 or 8. Do you see what I'm?
So, wait a minute, one second.
Says utility area.
Yeah, are you counting 8 feet to the utilities or 11 feet to the house?
No, that's a pad where you'd have the HVAC, and that's not part of the structure necessarily. That's the, what we're proposing is 11 feet for the side yard setback to the foundation.
Okay, because that, I wasn't clear on that. All right, thank you very much for that. And then on the east, the proposed setback is going to be 11 feet then?
Yes, I think you've inverted, you've inverted the direction, but yes, on the west, it's proposed as 11, and on the east, it's also proposed as 11, so.
Okay, all right. Now, the next thing I just want to clarify here, so we get our, when we make our findings, we're correct. Would you please go through the sections of the zoning bylaw that you are requesting we rule on?
Yes, so what we are applying under is simply, and I apologize if that came out more confusing than I intended it to, what we're applying under is 240-10.2A.
Right.
For change to an existing nonconforming structure.
Nonconforming structure.
And 240-12.1E, which governs all special permits. We're not actually requiring, requesting a special permit under 11.3A4, because the resulting lot coverage will still be in excess of 20%, 25%.
Okay, that was what I was fuzzy on.
I just thought it was, would be helpful for the board to go through some of those parameters as well.
All right, so if we give you, if the board is so inclined and is willing to vote to a special permit, you'll be satisfied if we refer to those two sections?
Yes, that's all we're, that's all we applied under.
All right, thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
So I'm taking it the fourth bedroom, is that on the first floor? It says library or something? Office. That's kind of the fourth bedroom?
Yeah, I would think so. So we have 1, 2, 3. I think actually the, the, yes, I think that the office would be the fourth, because this is open to the floor below.
Yeah, because that way we don't have to make that doorway wider, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my take on it, anyway. And I don't know if the rest of the members feel, do you think we need a height certification on this?
We should get an ASBILT for that.
On the ASBILT, okay.
Yeah, we can do a height certification of framing.
Okay. And that's all I have. Tony?
I think it's a substantial improvement, and I have no questions.
Anybody from the public want to comment on this? We're good. Anybody want to give me a motion?
I would make a motion, continue this hearing to the 17th of July.
Was it 15th or 17th?
17.
17.
You good with that?
Give me half a second.
So we have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? All right, great, thank you. All right, we have 33 Martin.
This is application 019 of the year 2025. Lars Bergren, 33 Martin Road, East Falmouth, Wacoite, Massachusetts. He's applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit slash variance pursuant to sections 240-10.2A and 240-12.3A of the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling and to allow the existing dwelling to remain until the proposed dwelling has been completed. Property is 33 Martin Road, Wacoite. The zoning district is AGA. Again, it's an application under sections 240-10.2A and 240-12.3A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the nonconforming single-family dwelling and allow the existing dwelling to remain until the proposed single-family dwelling is completed. The, it's in an AE 10 flood zone, it's in the Wacoite Bay, AC EC. It has a coastal bank, there are wetlands, and related buffer zones on the property. The, it's in a historic district, and it's in the Wacoite Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District. The existing structure is two-bedroom, and the proposed structure will be four-bedroom. The lot size is 39,123 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires a minimum of 45,000 square feet. Street frontage is 227.4. Street frontage is 227.4 feet in a zoning district, which currently requires 150 feet. Martin Road is a public right-of-way at this particular location. Lot coverage by structure, the existing structure is 7 percent, the proposed structure will be 10.8 percent, within the limit of 20 percent, as expressed in the zoning bylaw. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, is currently 7.4 percent. Proposal is to increase it to 12.4 percent, and within the 40 percent limit of the zoning bylaw. The existing property basically conforms to the zoning bylaw, with the exception of the northerly, the north setback is 8.4 feet, and it require, that's the, that's why we're into the variance. The engineering department has asked us to consider stormwater runoff, and they've also noted a building number issue, that you'll have to work out with the, with the engineering department. When you've completed the house, get a correct number for it. This is in a nitrogen-sensitive area. The Board of Health has pointed out that they're okay with a four-bedroom, and they want a reserve area for future use. The Conservation Commission has approved an order of condition on September of 2024. The Water Department requests an upgrade of the water service to 1-inch PE with the meter in the house. The Planning Board has noted that you have, that they approved an approval, excuse me, they endorsed an approval-not-require plan combining two lots to make the current lot, and that that plan has to be recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds before you can get a building permit and.
I took the plan out there myself a couple of months ago.
Fine, you've done it, you've done, that's, we're just reading the referral. The demolition has been approved by the Historic Commission. There has, we have no letters of support or in opposition noted in the file. We also have wastewater and fire, have no comment.
Sounds good. Go ahead, sir.
I just, I didn't know if you guys had any concerns about someone living there. It's really, it's economical. I mean, it costs 30 grand to put all my stuff in storage, live in another place, commute back and forth, you know?
No, the Building Commissioner had no comment on that, so.
Okay, well.
And we've got ruling from Town Council.
That's the main reason I want to do it that way.
We've got a ruling from Town Council, but.
So, we're okay with it?
We're okay to do it. We have to make it a condition that the final occupancy permit of the new house not be issued until you confirm with the Building Commissioner you're going to take the other one down.
Yeah, well, it's like I said a month ago, it's like I'm not going to try to pull a fast one and put a breezeway up and live in two, you know? I'm not doing that. House is old and ugly, and I want to get rid of it. It's 125 years old, it's built on grade. The pipes froze the year I moved in there, I couldn't even get to them if they burst. It's built on grade, it's an old, it's an old house, a really old, crummy house.
How old is it?
It's basically turn of the century. The original deed was like, you know, down by the oak trees, down by the river, it's like, that's, you know, that's what's written on the original deed.
Anybody have any questions up here, Mark?
No, I don't have any questions, and I have no problem with him staying in the house, as long as they advise by Town Council's ruling. Money is money, I understand that completely, so I'm good. You had to think stake properly, so.
Just have to take the house down to finish the deck. But you probably saw I staked it.
Sorry?
The engineers, they came and staked it.
Yeah, no, I have no issues. As the applicant just mentioned, the stakes were there, so that was, made it easy, and hopefully by you being able to live there, you can get the contractors in and out of there quicker.
Yeah, I'm going to be right there on site.
I have no questions.
Doing a lot of the work myself, so.
So, you have asked us for a variance, which we have the authority to grant, and I'm going to just read you the conditions that we have to find to grant you the variance. There has to be conditions relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of the land, affecting the land but not generally the zoning district, so that a literal enforcement would be a substantial hardship. Could you address to us, and for the people watching, what are these, I think your issue's mainly topography, correct?
It's a real gentle slope going towards the river where the house is built, and then it drops off precipitously at some point, about halfway down the lot.
Well, about, what percentage of your lot is actually buildable?
Only up near the road. I mean, that's, I can't, I'm not allowed to go anywhere near the, in fact, the house is like, it's, the house, the corner of the house is on the A-zone.
Right.
Nobody's going to budge on the A-zone. They don't want me to go four inches inside the A-zone.
No.
And so, it's on the diagonal to face south, because I'm going to have a solar-powered house. It's going to be panels and.
So, are you, are you constrained then in where you can build by the topography of your land?
Yes.
Okay.
Pursuant to the river and the zoning.
Well, that's the finding we have to make, and we just need somebody to say that at the hearing.
Yeah.
You did a fine job saying it.
Said it for him.
Right, we don't have it up there, but you could see all the little contour line, the A-zone, the B-zone, I mean, you guys do this every day, so.
Thank you.
I'm all set. Tony, do you have any questions?
Well, not anymore. Mr. Duffy covered that. I, as one member, don't see the hardship involved, but apparently you've demonstrated that there is a hardship, and appears to be satisfactory to the rest of the board. We also have notes coming from Town Council that you will have restrictions as to when you need to tear down the existing house, and if you don't, the town will deal with that. So, I'm going to leave that issue alone. I don't believe that hardship has been demonstrated, but the rest of the board does, I'll leave it alone.
It's expensive.
It's not a hardship, not in this case, not under the state of Massachusetts. I'm leaving it alone.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to comment on this project? Then cross anything further you want to add?
No, just, you know, it's been a long process, so.
It has.
On the whole stretch. With your help, hopefully I can get started on it.
We'll continue, it's to the 17th of July.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. We have a motion in a second to continue to July 17th, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. So, July 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, on deck, we have Zero Melrose. Part 2.
All right, this is Application 062, 20 of the year 2024, on remand. This is a court-ordered remand. The owner of the property is Lawrence T. and Valerie N. Sullivan. They've applied to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4 of the zoning bylaw to raise the existing accessory structure, which is a garage, and construct a single-family dwelling exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structure. The property is located at no number, Melrose Avenue, it's identified as Lot 8. Again, this is remanded from the Land Court by agreement of the parties. The zoning district is RC, the overlay district is none. The flood zone is X. The existing garage is 497 square feet. The proposed, proposed building will be a one-bedroom, single-family dwelling with garage, 756 square feet. There is a previous decision of the Board of Appeals relative to this property, it's number 62 dash of the year 2024. Special permit was denied, it has been appealed to Land Court, is currently in litigation, and this is a remand from the Land Court by agreement of the parties. The lot is 3,711 square feet in a zoning district, which currently requires a minimum of 40,000 square feet. Frontage is 50 feet in the zoning district, which currently requires 100 feet. The Melrose Avenue is a public right-of-way at this location. The current lot coverage by structure is 13.39 percent, will be increased to 20.3 percent, the limit is 20, but by special permit, we can exceed that to 25 percent. According to the worksheet, the average in the district is, I'll have to read that later. Lot coverage by structure is, structured parking and paving is 16.41 percent, will be increased to 25.41 percent, which is within the 40 percent limit of the zoning bylaw. The existing garage is nonconforming, because there is no principal structure, it's an accessory structure with no principal structure on the lot. But it conforms to zoning in terms of dimensional requirements, and the proposed structure will also conform to setbacks as set forth in the zoning bylaw. The existing building is 16 feet 4 inches, the proposal is to increase the building to 23 feet 11 inches. The engineering department has requested that we condition a driveway permit, that there be no stormwater runoff, and erosion and sediment control be addressed. The Board of Health has advised us they have no issues, Conservation Commission says no issues. The Water Department says a new service will, and will be necessary if there's a residential structure with a meter in the building. The Building Department has issued no comment, but they did send us a copy of the 1871 plan of the neighborhood. We have a number of, we have, excuse me, three, three letters in support, four letters in opposition, one letter which expressed concern, and we have a letter from Mr. Harmsen, who asked that it be, part of it be read into the record, but I note that Mr. Kirk has filed a letter with us, in which he says he represents Mr. Harmsen, so therefore we'll hear from him directly. The.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Duffy, for reading that in. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Clower. And I am before you tonight, representing my friends Larry and Valerie Sullivan, who reside at 345 Grand Avenue and are the owners of this property, Zero Melrose Avenue. Mr. Sullivan is here with us this evening. They are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming structure on a lot that is presently 3,711 square feet in the RC zoning district. As Mr. Duffy went into detail on, this was reviewed by the board, and the special permit vote failed to carry on a 3 to 2 vote requiring a supermajority. However, the applicant did appeal that decision, and has revised the plan significantly in an attempt to address the concerns of the board and the butters. There was a joint motion for a man submitted by the applicants and by this board, agreeing to send the revised plans back for consideration. So, as such, an amended application was submitted in April of this year, with a new site plan and architectural plans, and an application amended to reflect the revised proposal. Which brings us back before this board this evening. I think it would be helpful and important to spend some time reviewing the application in general, and the changes that have been made since the initial application. So, presently, there's a two-car garage, while conforming to setback in lot coverage requirements, the use itself is nonconforming, as it's an accessory structure without a primary use. The Sullivans are proposing to raise the existing garage and replace it with a single-family residence, which would have a single-car garage on the first floor, and a single-bedroom located on the second floor. The footprint would be 756 square feet, and it would be 20.37 percent lot coverage by structure. The ridge height is proposed at 23 feet 11 inches, well under the 35 that's allowed within the district. This will require a special permit from this board pursuant to 240 10.2A and 11.3A4. 240 10.2A allows an alteration of the existing nonconforming use to a conforming use, which is a single-family dwelling, which is a use that is allowed by right within the residential C zoning district. The proposed home will conform to all setback in lot coverage requirements, with the issuance of a special permit for that slight increase above 20 percent. The board must determine whether or not the change of this nonconforming use to a conforming one, one that's allowed by right, is substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use. The proposal does not create any new dimensional nonconformities, does not impair public views and vistas, and does reasonably conform to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Since the last meeting, the Sullivans have revised the plans significantly. The footprint is slightly increased to 758 square feet, but that's done as to lower the proposed ridge height. The ridge height was reduced significantly. It was proposed at slightly over 32 feet, and it's now proposed to 23 feet 11 inches, which is an increase of only seven feet over the existing garage. The design of the dwelling has changed considerably to more closely reflect other nearby properties. It's really a modest cottage. The existing garage is a legally nonconforming structure, though it is a nonconforming use. We talked about this previously, but Chapter 184 of the Acts of 2016, entitled "An Act Relative to Nonconforming Structures," took effect in November of 2016, and that amended Chapter 7 of the Zoning Act, clarifying the status of structures that were constructed in violation of zoning ordinance or bylaw. Pursuant to that amendment, nonconforming structures that are nonconforming at the time of the structure's establishment are deemed lawful pre-existing nonconforming, if no enforcement action is taken within 10 years, and therefore eligible to make changes and alterations pursuant to Section 6 of the Zoning Act, as well as any local ordinance or zoning bylaw regarding nonconforming structures. Section 2 of that act specifically states that this change is applicable, whether or not the structure was erected prior to or after the effective date. Our bylaw itself was changed at the November Town Meeting to reflect this change. 240 10.3A1 specifically states that structures that qualify under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 7, are considered nonconforming structures, and are entitled to treatment as such, as provided within that section. The amendment to this Massachusetts general law, in the language of our bylaw, make it clear that since the structure is clearly more than 10 years old, it is therefore considered legally nonconforming, and eligible to seek relief pursuant to Section 6, and a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A. So, 240 10.2A states that pre-existing nonconforming structures, or uses, may be extended, altered, or changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental. At the prior hearings, there was a discussion relative to the size of the lot, and whether or not it was appropriate for the proposed by-right use as a single-family dwelling. These lots were laid out in the 1800s. Lots of this size and smaller even are incredibly common in this area. Houses are built on those lots, and are certainly suitable for use as a single-family dwelling. This is no different. In fact, this proposal is more conforming to the bylaw than those existing structures, and by no means be out of character. Within just a few hundred feet, there's at least 25 homes on lots of 3,900 square feet or less. Of those 25 homes, the average lot coverage by structure is 42.53 percent. Our proposal's 20.37 percent. This is entirely in character with the other properties, in terms of lot size, and in terms of the size and style of the building. So, this proposal would include one interior garage parking space, and two parking spaces in the driveway. The proposal meets all setback and lot coverage requirements, and as I noted at a prior hearing, this would effectively be a unicorn. It's the rarest of rare things. It is a house in the heights that is not nonconforming to setbacks or lot coverage requirements. Under the stated provision of the bylaw, 240 10.2A, changing an existing nonconforming use to a conforming use, a single-family dwelling is allowed by right and can be allowed by special permit. Again, the structure will conform to all setback and lot coverage requirements, does not create any new dimensional nonconformities, impair public views and vistas, and does reasonably conform to the neighborhood. Under 11.3A4 for lot coverage by structure, we're exceeding by .37 percent. That section of the bylaw allows the board to grant a special permit for lot coverage in excess of 20 percent, and you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas in public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, there's no impact of views and vistas in public ways. Though building is slightly larger than at present, it is very much in character in size of nearby homes, in area of many similarly sized homes or larger, and they are installing an entirely conforming wastewater system. I think it's important to note the Sullivans did make efforts to speak with the neighbors about these plans and the design of them. A full set of the plans was sent to the Harmsen family, the owners of Four Melrose, in hopes of discussion. There wasn't acknowledgement of receipt, but no further contact. They met with the owners of 10 Melrose, 5 Melrose, 7 Vernon, 9 Vernon, they sent copies of the plans to, and they met with the owners of 2 and 6 Wyoming. We did, I did receive correspondence from Attorney Kirk this afternoon. I had the opportunity to review the case that was cited in his letter, which is, I'm going to probably butcher this name, Shiara Luce versus Zoning Board of going to probably butcher this name, Chiara Luce versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Wareham. Attorney Kirk's letter posits that that case makes it clear that residential use can be abandoned and therefore not allowed, but that's not what the case holds. The Chiara Luce case is completely distinguishable from this situation. That case pertains to a situation where a nonconforming structure was destroyed. The applicant had the opportunity to rebuild, but the court found that the nonconformity was abandoned and that the lot was merged with an abutting property because they spent nine and a half years with that lot vacant before they sought a building permit. In that case, in that particular case, it was found that they intended to abandon the nonconforming structure. The case is about a nonconforming structure being abandoned by its removal. The entire case hinges on that fact, that the nonconforming structure was removed and abandoned, not that a residential by-right use had been abandoned. In our case, the applicants have made significant efforts to listen to the abutters' concerns and comments of the board that made substantial changes to the plans as a result of those discussions and comments. This proposal meets all the standards set forth under 240-12.1E. Under Section A, the lot is adequate in terms of size to the proposed use. As noted, there's at least 25 lots within just a few hundred feet that are similar or smaller than this subject property, used for the same use as proposed, and this project will meet all setback and lot coverage requirements. The site is suitable for the proposed use. The applicants proposed a single-family residence in a zone that allows it as a by-right matter. The proposal's in compliance, again, with those lot coverage and setback requirements, and the septic's designed without variance. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety. The addition of a one-bedroom home in a densely developed area that does provide three parking spaces where only two are required should not have any impact. The neighborhood visual character will be largely unaffected. This is an area that is dense with existing dwellings that vary greatly in architectural style. This is a significant improvement over the existing, over the conditions of the existing garage, and designed to be a modest cottage in line with many of these nearby homes. There is adequate method of sewage disposal, water and drainage. There's an entirely conforming wastewater system. It is served by municipal water. The drainage will be improved significantly, as there's currently no drainage on this site, and this two large dry wells proposed, as well as part of the driveway permit will include a berm along the front to reduce runoff onto this site and to abutting properties through them. And there are adequate utilities and other public services that are unaffected by this proposal. I certainly don't mean to be reductive, but this is an elimination of a decrepit garage that is nonconforming as to use with a functional, attractive dwelling that will not create any new dimensional nonconformities, will eliminate an existing nonconforming use, is entirely in character with the neighborhood in terms of lot size, design, and use. For all of these reasons, I believe this meets the requirements of 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E. I hope that I've addressed any questions the board may have. I would ask that the board grant the special permit, but I would of course be glad to address any questions that you may have at this time.
I'm just not done on this end.
Thank you. I have several questions, because if this were straightforward, then we wouldn't be back here today. Can you tell us why the court found that an order of remand was necessary? What was the reasoning behind that? Because, and let me just, because on page six of our decision specifically says, "The board found particularly that the site was not adequate or suitable for the proposed use," except none of that shows up in the order of remand. And I can't find why the judge or the court did that.
Yes. So, well, I'd point out it was a joint motion by this board and the applicants for remand. But, and I'd be happy to read to you from that joint motion. And if this isn't part of the file, I'd be happy to submit it. So it says, "Now comes the plaintiffs, Lawrence T. Sullivan and Valerie N. Sullivan, and the defendants, listing the board members, as they are members of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, and hereby move this honorable court to issue an order of remand to the board for further proceedings consistent with the provisions set forth herein." And it goes on to say, "Paragraph 1, this is a zoning appeal pursuant to general law, Chapter 48, Section 17, in which the Sullivans appeal a decision of the board concerning the Sullivan's property located at Zero Melrose Avenue, Falmouth. The Sullivans applied for a special permit to allow an existing structure to be raised and rebuilt as a single-family dwelling on the property. Paragraph 2, subsequent to the institution of the above-capsured actions, the Sullivans have made certain modifications to their project plan. The parties have conferred and agreed that remand to the board for further consideration of the Sullivan's application for special permit to undertake the project as amended as appropriate. The parties respectfully request that this matter be remanded to the board in a form consistent with the proposed order of remand appended heretofu as Exhibit A." So that is the sum and substance of the joint order, motion for remand.
Thank you for reading that. Now...
Would you like this to the file, Mr. Petrucci?
If I, no, even though that I listened to what you had to say, I think I got most of it, and frankly don't understand why the court did that, but that's okay at the moment. What about this request that you're making today for a substantially different structure, including its dimensions on the site, is so different from the original one back when we looked at this back then? Why does this now make it any better or any different? Because we found that the site was not adequate or suitable for the proposed use. This is actually a bigger foundation than the last one. So why, it's just a shorter house, different style, is this just an attempt to appease the neighborhood because of height?
No, it's an attempt to listen to the comments of the neighbors, as well as this board. So there were objections to the architectural design. This was, what I had before you on the screen right now was the original home that was proposed, and what you see here is what's being proposed today. It is a significantly different structure. It's reduced in scale. It's changed in style significantly. It's designed to be more in character with nearby homes. So I think there are significant departures from what was applied for previously. However, you know, you made the finding, you stated that there was a finding that the lot was inadequate for size. Three members of the board voted that it was, and I think that we're provided enough evidence that this house as designed fits in the character with the neighborhood and is very similar to other nearby homes. So I think that what we've shown you today, and the court agreed, was significantly different, and that's why there was this joint motion for remand that the court approved to bring this before you today.
So that, so there's the reason. Then, and I'm almost done, Madam Chair, because I have some questions for Attorney Kirk. Under 240-10.3B1A, all right, and I know that you read several aspects of what's changed in zoning bylaw. Now, this required, 10.3B1A, and I hope I get all of this correct, that this building, the existing building, had to exist on before 1-1-1981.
No, that nonconforming lot section, the nonconforming lot section is relative to undeveloped lots. So what we're looking at is under 240-10.2A for nonconforming structures. This is a legally pre-existing nonconforming structure. So the nonconforming lot section is relative to if this was a vacant lot. If I was trying to establish that this is a buildable lot ab initio, which we're not, this is, we have an existing structure with a nonconforming use on this lot. The 10.3 is only applied and used when it's a vacant parcel.
Yet, part of 10.3B indicates that, it says, "Was it used for single," well, I'm paraphrasing, "was it used for single-family residential use?" Vacant land is not used for anything but vacant land, and therefore implies that there is some residential use on the property.
Could you direct me to where you're reading it, Mr. Petrucci?
It suggests that there has to be a residential use. Vacant land is not a residential use.
Sure, but if you were proposing a single-family residence. So...
No, no, I disagree with that, and I don't mean to, I don't want to argue with it, I really don't. I'm just reading what this bylaw says. For single-family residential use, and maybe I'm confused about what it says, and that's your job to help me through that, so it's not for residential use. It's not being, was not being used for residential use.
That's correct. That's exactly our point, that it's currently a nonconforming use. But what that section says is, "Any increase in area or lot with requirements in the zoning bylaw shall not apply to a lot shown on a plan." And then it says, "For single-family residential use, shown on a plan for single-family residential use." So that is intended for.
My, I'm just trying to get this on the record. My last question to you, at least for the moment, is that the pre-existing lot, whether it has a property on it or it's empty, had to be 7,500 square feet, and it only has 3,711 square feet.
Under today's current bylaw, if we were, if this was a vacant parcel, completely vacant parcel, under today's bylaw, we'd need to establish that. However, what we have is a structure on the lot that is a nonconforming use, and what we've established is that there are a number of properties within a very short radius of this property that are on similar or smaller lots that also have single-family dwellings on them. So what we have now is nonconforming use that would like to convert to a by-right use in that zoning district.
And all of those came in under 10.3B1A?
They likely predate that. I don't know when 10.3B1A was created.
I don't want to take any more of the board's time at the moment, but thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, but I'd just like to make a comment. This is a remand from the land court. You should not read anything into a remand. It's not the court telling us what we have to do. The court is allowing the applicant to come back before us with a new plan, and this is really administrative. I suspect that the judge never even read the decision, because they don't care what it says. What they're trying to do is see if the parties can work out a solution so they don't have to try the case. That's all this is about, all right? They're not telling you you have to approve anything. We have the authority to do what we ordinarily do. So, and we've been doing this for years. In fact, it's probably, I will say it's almost traditional that when a case is appealed to court, we agree to at least one remand just to see if we can work it out. And if we can't, we don't have to agree to any more, and we usually don't. Mr. Clower, I didn't read in, when I read you the referrals, that the Board of Health has required that if there is an approved residence here in the septic system, they needed, you'll need a deed restriction?
Yeah, because we're only designing, we're only proposing one bedroom. The system's designed for two, and anytime you have a system designed for less than three bedrooms, it requires a deed restriction.
Okay, so you're prepared to agree to that if it becomes necessary. Also, would you clarify for me, I, this is, I'm confused on this, lot coverage by structure, you submitted a worksheet showing an average in the neighborhood. Was it 30.51 percent for the neighborhood? Is that what you came up with?
Yes.
That's lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I made, my note was incorrect. All right.
I appreciate the changes. I think that they're beneficial to the abutters and the folks that had some issues in the first round. There was a retaining wall that was on the Westerly side. Any status on that, Attorney Clower? And again, if you could just speak to some of the water issues that some of the abutters had.
Sure, so I know that the Richards, who are on Vernon, are having water runoff issues. That stems largely from another property on Melrose Avenue that has covered their lot with about 90 percent of concrete, and there, you can see the runoff coming from that property. It is being channeled through some of this property, but that's why you'll see here, there were the leaching catch basins that were recently installed, the driveway notes, a paved apron with berm to deflect stormwater, and we're also adding two significant drywells here and here in order to capture as much runoff on this site as we possibly can. So there's been no change in the status. That's been our plan from the start, knowing that there are some drainage issues, but not cause, you know, this, anything we do here is going to improve that.
Thank you. And could you pull up the elevation of the, no, I think that's substantially better than where we were back in July of last year, whatever it was. Thank you.
I think this is a substantial change, and quite a great effort to satisfy the neighbors. But I'm the one that produced that old lot diagram from 1871. I mean, there are numerous lots in the heights this size. A lot is a lot is a lot. I mean, there are houses on, all of them, some of them smaller. I mean, you just have to let logic apply. I mean, firstly, I would propose that he would only be able to have the garage there, but that's not allowable. I mean, this is, you know, it passed snuff with the Building Department. The alternative is to render this lot valueless to Mr. Sullivan? That's hardly fair when there are people all around the neighborhood living on lots exactly the same size or smaller. I think he's gone out of his way. A one-bedroom house? I mean, who would even build a one-bedroom house?
I thought it was telling that one of the letters of opposition that came in saying this lot's clearly too small to be built upon, that 3,711 square feet, was from the owner of a lot with 3,800, 3,800 square foot lot. So it's, you know, it's for me, not for thee.
I don't think it's up to us to draw the line. I think this is more than a reasonable counterproposal, and as I say, the alternative is to render his investment valueless. I just couldn't see that. That's all.
I think he's using it as a parking lot.
What, one-bedroom house for guests or whatever?
It's not valueless, because he's using it as, he...
Well, I mean, how many people own parking lots in Falmouth Heights?
I'm just telling you, it's not valueless, he's using it. Anyway, any other further questions up here before Attorney Kirk?
Ms. Murphy, I can just speak to, actually, the comment you had made. There's nothing in the decision for 345 Grand Avenue that stipulates there'll be parking on this lot. Testimony was during construction, there was extra parking available nearby, but there's no condition in that decision that requires any parking on this site for 345 Grand Avenue, because that site has enough parking, more than is required in that situation. And what we're proposing here is three parking spaces where only two would be required for a single-family dwelling, because we're providing one interior space and two exterior spaces. So it is, you know, I hesitate to say that we're using it for parking. Yes, they'll use it for excess parking on an as-needed basis, but that is not what they want to use the site for. And the allowance of this would not inhibit that either.
Just several of the letters said that it was utilized...
Sure, but there's a lot of misinformation in many of the letters, because they say that it's...
I don't live across the street, so I wasn't, I'm not counting on...
No, the letters state that there was a condition of the decision, but that's not the case. There's no condition in that 345 Grand Avenue decision that states that this is to be used as parking for that site.
Anybody have any further questions before, we can ask Attorney Kirk questions too.
I'm representing the abutters, I'd like to talk in favor of it, before the attorney substitute is done.
Sure, come on up.
Be quick.
I'm representing Vani and Ken Arnstein. They bought 9 Vernon, oh, about four years ago, and twice they've been inundated from runoff from this site, well, from, that goes right through the site. And I just want you to take a quick look at this little presentation we put together. 357 Grand Ave. I don't know how you calculate the lot coverage ratio on that pavement, but all the runoff is totally channeled through one little corner. You can see those arrows showing where it goes. All the runoff from the house comes down this massive pipe through the lot, and then it is all channeled down to this corner, right here. No drainage anywhere else, and the whole site comes through here, and then it flows out to the street through this pipe here, it's washing away the sidewalk. And I've met with the town several times, and I got them to put this drainage here. This is the low part in Vernon. And the DPW recognized this problem, and they put that drainage in, and it helped a little bit, but the last storm, it was inundated again. There's just so much runoff coming down this house, and it's all coming from whoever approved that 90 or 99 percent lot coverage there. And this is the drainage that's been put in. It's helped a little bit, but we still get overflow from it. I don't know who created or who approved the 90 percent lot coverage of that paving, but it's a disaster for the neighborhood. My clients have lost, they undermined their foundation of the house, $200,000. They had to put new structure in, in an existing home, and bore down. It's just been totally ridiculous. And the Sullivans have been saying they're going to do something to help. And the Sullivans have been saying they're going to do something to help, and they're saying we're going, we think this could help. As far as what's legal, we'll leave that up to you, but we are desperate to need help to solve this problem. And you can see, this is the low spot of the road. Melrose slopes down both directions, right in front of this house. And then there's, there's the exact low spot right there, and you can kind of see it, it's, oh, you can see right now, the drain helped a little bit, but it's still getting overwhelmed every time it rained. Just the last week, it got overwhelmed again. And here's a, here's, this is the side of the applicant's home. This is the ditch that's been, for years, that water just pours. And here's a picture of my client's house right after they bought it with the water coming in the basement from, from the pipe. And it totally inundated the whole basement, and it's all coming from, not their house, not the Sullivan's house, but a house on Grand Ave that flows down through his lot. And this, we've heard, there's new plans for this street for development. Please address this runoff issue. It's destroying a multimillion-dollar home that people have. It needs to be addressed, and you should look back and see what happened and how this lot got approved. I don't know whether anyone took a look at lot coverage ratios there and when that is approved. It looks like new pavement. I don't know what's going on, but the, we hope, the DPW has tried, they put in the new drains, but it got overwhelmed the last storm too. And we're really hoping that this structure would capture the water, redo it, put it in the ground, and help solve the neighborhood problem. Just, you've mentioned the drainage problem. It's really, really serious, and I just want to bring in, and I'd like to keep this on the record for any more future development on the street unless this is developed. I don't know what, how that, how 357 Grand Ave ever got that kind of lot coverage, and they channel it all down, not only the roof, but the parking lot. Everything's all in one drain, all coming to Melrose, and every house on the street also dumps all their water onto Melrose. And it all goes through the Sullivan's property into Nine Vernon, the Arnstof's property. And it's a terrible situation, and we're looking for relief. DPW's tried, they've gone out and put it in. I've been waiting for an opportunity to help, to bring this to your attention, and I want this to go on record of what's going on on that street for drainage.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. So, Jim? So, between the berm that the Sullivans proposed to put in and those two oversized drywells, it's, you're feeling that will, I remember when you came and showed the live video-
Yep.
-of the water going through that house. That was for the lot below-
Right.
-the permit there. It's your opinion that this construction and what he's adding will certainly have a chance of helping?
I'm not an engineer, Mark. I have-
You can still have an opinion. I didn't have to.
Well, I think the berm, what happened was, is I, the town was going to put the berm bigger, and it was going to divert the water and help trap in, but the Sullivan's said if you make it too big, we can't get in our driveway because now they have to go over a hump. And I've been assured that the Sullivan's engineers are going to deal with this issue. They're putting in two huge drywalls, and it needs to be solved. Every house, they're all dumping water into the street, and it's all, they're all in small lots, and you, somebody approved all of them.
I went down after, you were here before, during a rainstorm, and I watched how it works.
So I've documented very clearly, you can, you can see, look at the size of the drain pipe. This is, that house is huge, and it's, and you can see it's taking the water from the entire roof, both the front and back, put in the parking lot, and then the giant parking lot, and they're all shoving it down into one corner, one pipe, all coming down into Vernon, across the Sullivan's lot, I mean, across the Sullivan on Melrose and into Nine Vernon. They devastated the basement. They had to put these piles for, they washed out the foundation of the house, and they had to open up the floors and put these spherical piles down in to redo their structure.
And Jim, I ask question, please, something, Ms. Fox.
Are you suggesting that, I want to be sure I understand what you're saying. Are you suggesting that building this house will create a substantially detrimental issue?
No, I'm saying it's going to help.
So you believe that building this house will help if certain, certain things are done?
The drywalls in particular, the berm, everything that they talked about doing, they mentioned they're going to do, should help. As far as, I'll leave the legality of what the house is, what do you, but you were talking about drainage, and it is important, and that's, I just want to make sure you understand how serious the drainage issue is. And I, as far as zoning, that's your value, not mine, but this is a really, really, it's the most serious drainage issue I've seen in a long, long time.
Thank you. Does anybody ask the building commissioner to look into the situation at 357 Grand Avenue to see if they're in compliance with their permits?
I went to the engineering department in town at DPW, and that's all they did, we talked to them, and they, I got them to put the drains in.
Well, I understand you did, but, you know, usually when this board conditions a special permit, it requires it all runoff be contained on the lot. So this is rather surprising to hear about this problem. I'm wondering if somebody violated one of our special permits. I don't know. I'm just wondering.
We're not throwing stones. We're just trying to bring attention to the problem we're dealing with.
But if you go down that street when it's raining?
Every house, I deal with this all the time. I wait for the worst rainy day, I put my weather, and I stand there on a rainy day, and I watch the water come off their roofs, and I documented it. It's real easy. You don't have to be an engineer if you go out when it's raining real hard. Big pictures, and that's what we've done.
Any kind of a berm is going to help. And you can see that whenever it's raining.
Well, Madam Chair, may I just say this? I don't necessarily agree with any type of berm. They have to be designed from an engineering perspective. All I see on this plan is an existing berm, and I know he's not throwing stones, casting stones, but the stone is there, and just because it says berm doesn't make it effective.
Elevation does though.
And I agree with, I do, Mark, I agree with you. But if that is a conclusion to make a correction for the folks down behind here, then it's going to be done correctly, or it's just going to continue to be a problem. So how does this board, do we say to the applicant, you need to go back and come to us and prove that you are not going to continue to shed water behind you? Or do we just say, hey, this is good enough?
The drainage that they're putting on, the drywells, is more inadequate to do anything that their lot is contributing to. It's a teeny little house on a very small lot, and they're putting in giant drywells.
Huge.
Let somebody else decide the engineering.
All right, so that may be the solution. Okay.
But the problem is not only, it's the neighbors too. It's the whole street, and it's really, it's really bad.
We can only deal with this one application, huh?
Well, I thought it was an opportunity to bring it. I've got two presentations here, one you can watch, one you go through slowly, and one that runs by itself.
Oh, I, believe me, I get it.
I want them to be in the file because I know other people are going to try to build on that street, and please deal with this issue, the runoff issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Attorney Kirk.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Edward Kirk. I'm an attorney with a law office in Centerville, and I'm representing Brian Healy of Seven Vernon Ave, Patrick and Erin Kent of Three Melrose, and Mark Harmson and Caroline McManus at Four Melrose. I just want to start off by saying not all lots in Falmouth are all buildable all the time, and protection can never be lost. There's no provision in the bylaw that provides a safety net like that. Each case has to be decided differently on the facts, and in fact, rights can be lost, not through any fault of a subsequent owner such as the Sullivans. I'm sure they've worked hard to revise these plans in hopes that they'll pass muster with you folks, but there are some really fundamental problems here with this proposal as, as I see it. They're going to, they have a lovely home, I'm sure, on Grand Avenue, and then they have this little lot, a couple of streets and blocks away, and they acquired ownership of that when they bought their, their home. And now appears they, you know, they want to try to extract something, some more value out of that situation, and that's all well and good. That's the American way. But I think there are some serious problems with respect to this lot, and we go back to, you know, those old, the age-old dilemma about talking about uses and talking about structures and trying to see what language applies in any particular situation. The history of this lot, in my opinion, indicates that any right to construct a residence on this lot has been abandoned or lost, and that happened quite some time ago. Again, nothing to do with the Sullivans. It's sort of an unusual history. In 1945, there were three lots, Lots Five, Lot Seven, and Lot Eight on Melrose Avenue were conveyed to Edward and Rose Hughes. Now Lots Five and Seven are on the east side of Melrose. Lot Eight is directly across the street from Five and Seven, which I believe are now merged, directly across the street. Hughes apparently developed Five and Seven on the west side and used Lot Eight as parking lot that would appear as accessory to their lot across the street, Lots Five and Seven combined. And somewhere along the line between, in their ownership, appears that they, actually in addition to using it for parking, they built a garage. Now, when you build a garage, you're definitely saying this is the use we, as the owners, are going to make of this lot. It's going to be an accessory use for parking. There's no intention on the part of the owner to preserve that lot for residential use. They planted their flag, and at that point, the ability, I think, to use that lot for residential purposes by the positive act of the owner was abandoned. In 1953, the Hugheses conveyed their residential lots, Five and Seven, to a couple named John and Catherine, Catherine Hannan. And on that same day, they didn't include the Lot Eight, their parking garage, in the conveyance to Hannan. Hannan went their separate ways, and Lot Eight was conveyed to two, two individual men. The garage, they bought the garage. And the deed states that, you know, that there's a, there's a garage building on the So the critical date I'm asking you to look at is July of 1953. The ownership of Lot Eight was severed from the principal use, the residential principal use of the Hugheses. And now it's sort of free-floating out there in the neighborhood, if you will. It's untethered to any other property. It's just a lot with a structure on it. You know, it occurred to me that, you know, maybe they were going to rent out lot space, or maybe they thought they could develop it, but they never did. So since 1950, starting in 1953, it was sort of out there in space. You got a lot with a garage on it and no principal use attached to it. And it, the Lot Eight remained in the ownership of these two gentlemen, James J. Clifford and another fellow named Charlton Lyman, for 15 years. Now, Mr. Clifford, so happens, he and his wife owned Lots 52 and 53 on Grand Avenue, but the ownership of this lot was entirely separate from James and Marie Clifford. Then in 1968, the executors of Mr. Lyman conveyed that lot to Marie Clifford. So now we have, now we have, 1968, we have the ownership of Lots 52 and 53 on Grand Avenue, or the ownership, it was just Marie, her husband died, so she now owns 52, 53, and she owns Lot Eight. And then in 69, she conveyed to Rod and Gene Baltz. I know I'm getting old because I remember the Baltzes. And then eventually from Baltz, it was sold to the Sullivans. So it, there may have, there was a point in time where perhaps Lot Eight was a buildable lot, but once it was designated by the owner as a, as a place to park and then separated from their ownership, it did not become a buildable lot. It was just a lot with a structure on it. Now, at the, at the present time, I think it, that has, that lot has to be treated as, as if, you can't bootstrap and avoid the area requirements just because there's a structure on that lot. If there had been a residence put on that lot back in between 1945 and 53, then it would be preserved for residential use. And if someone came along and they wanted to expand, alter, raise, replace, rebuild that structure, a residential structure, then they'd be properly, you know, you could properly do that if all the other requirements were met. But that's not the case here. You don't have a residential structure. You just have a structure. And I think you have to view this as if it were vacant land because it doesn't have the protection of a prior residential use. And we know it's only 3,700 square feet, and, and the bylaw reaches back and gives a lot of protection to old lots, a lot of protection, but it sets the floor. And the floor is 7,500 square feet, and the cutoff date is January 1, 1981. You had to conform to the area requirements as of January 1, 1981. This lot does not meet that standard either. So that's, that's the point I want to make. I haven't had time to sort of go through all the ins and outs of lot coverage and that sort of thing, but I think the fundamental question to begin, to begin with is, it does, is this lot, does it even qualify for any kind of a building permit? And I suggest that, that it does not. And the fact that it may be this, the proposed structure may be the same size as other houses in the neighborhood, that doesn't carry the day. That's not the point. You have to enforce your bylaw and determine, is this a buildable lot? So I'd ask you to determine after proper deliberation that it's, it's not a buildable lot, and it's, it's not entitled to the special permit being requested. That's all.
You all set?
I am.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you. When that was conveyed in 1968 to the Baltzes, is it?
Yeah.
What would have prevented them from building a structure on that?
The same thing that I'm, if somebody was there to oppose, the same arguments that I'm making here today.
If they were accepted?
Yes, right.
Now, what does the building department say about this? I mean, is there anywhere that they say that this is not a buildable- I mean, is there anywhere that they say that this is not a buildable lot?
No, they simply attached a copy of the 1871 plan to the referral. Didn't say anything.
Didn't say a word.
Oh. They didn't say that it wasn't buildable. I mean, it's, there are lots this-
Didn't say a word.
Either way.
There's lots all over the heights this size. I just don't see how we can deny this. I just, I don't. I don't think it would be fair. The structure that's there is obviously past its useful life. I mean, it's, it needs to be renewed. I mean, the proposal, I think, is very modest. And I just, personally, I don't see how we can't allow something to be built on this house when there are lots this size all over the heights with houses built on them. It's a accessory structure without a primary dwelling, but that was permissible when it was built. I just don't see it.
Scott.
Attorney Kirk, your points are, you know, well-taken. We struggled with this in our last go-round about the size of the lot and only being this accessory building that was there. But from a butters' perspective, what if the applicant came back and built a two-car garage with a 35-foot ridge height? I, that's, you know, we have obviously two different components that, at least for me, I look at. And I think that we kind of went round and round to Mark's comments on the size of the lot, the years. We went back and looked at the history of the Falmouth Heights. And, yeah, it would be a whole lot easier if there was an existing dwelling there for the, from the applicant's perspective. But for me, at least, the applicant has made great strides to, you know, lower that ridge height, make it a lot more presentable architecturally. And hopefully, to what we heard tonight in testimony, is hopefully they're going to better the area from a water perspective. So, I appreciate your comments and I think we wrestled with those our last go-round.
Mr. Kirk, we got a letter from you this afternoon, which I believe was multiple pages. I was unable, I didn't have time to read it, so I apologize for that. But I would like to give some consideration to what you have to say. Does your letter contain all the information you've just given us? I mean, you've given us a real plate full of stuff to think about here.
I'm sorry about that. The letter, actually, is two pages.
Okay.
What the bulk of the-
But you see, you attached the case.
I attached the case and I attached the chronology-
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, right.
All of the information that you have given to us orally-
Yes.
Is in writing, if we have time to read that letter soon.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I was trying to write it all down myself.
Well, no, you can't.
No, hopefully it's all, it's all there.
All right, great. Tony?
Yes, Mr. Kirk, I have a couple of questions. Be patient with me on this. The applicant's attorney corrected me by saying that I'm looking at 10.3 and that lies to non-conforming lots when I should be looking at 10.2, non-conforming structures. Yet in your letter of June 5th, you refer to 10.3B1, which really makes, I think, your case if 10.3B1A is appropriate. Now, the applicant's attorney's saying, no, that's not appropriate, but it's what you referred to. Then when you look at 10.2, which is the applicant's attorney's reference, 10.2A1, pre-existing nonconformities, now we're talking about structures, it says, "Pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, changed only by special permit." Okay? It's a structure. But yet, 2, now we're referring to, and here's where I love our bylaws so much, now when you go down to paragraph 2, it's referring to any residential structure. So, if the applicant's attorney is correct that we should be looking at this as a pre-existing structure, and our bylaw creates a confusion between structure and residential, I'm not sure which one I'm supposed to look at. You want us to use 10.3A, which the applicant's attorney says applies only to empty lots. And that works really well for your clients. Then you refer to this case, 2016's Charleluce versus, I couldn't do it either, Mr. Clower, versus zoning board of appeals of Wareham. How does, why should the board apply that case hearing to this application?
Because the, what they're seeking to do is use this lot for residential purposes. It's never been used for residential purposes. Once upon a time, it had the benefit of being in a zone where you could build a residence on it, such as they did across the street, lot five, lot seven. This lot was never used for that. And that's where this abandonment theory comes in. It's in your bylaw, it's in the cases, that if you're going to, you want to use that lot to have a garage to park your car, fine. But you're not going to be able to use it for residential purposes. And that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to come back around and resurrect a residential use which has been abandoned. And they're trying to sort of bootstrap it on a, on the fact that there's a structure there. And I'll concede, if there was a residential structure there, they'd be all set. But this almost has to be treated as starting from scratch. You've lost, you've lost your ability to use this lot for a residential-
In this case, law supports that.
I believe it does.
Because the applicant's attorney said, well, no, it's a very different situation where the structure was torn down and doesn't apply.
Yes, I mean, and there's, they were talking about structures, but they also do talk about And it, let's see if I can come up with that. There's a very long sentence. "All the time period is not as extreme as the 23 years present in Dialaway," that's the case. Of course, here you have a lot more than 23 years. "Given the availability of a blanket special permit here, they had a permit to be able to build. It's unexplained lapse, the failure to attempt to build for over nine and a half years while in the raising of the nonconforming structure and the judge's finding that Charleluce, we're all having problems with that, intended to use, to use the locus as a parking lot. The structure and the right to reconstruct it have been abandoned as a matter of law." So, the owner's use back in 1953, saying, you're, this is where I'm parking my cars and this is where I'm building my garage, that's when the right to use that lot was lost.
And I appreciate, thank you. I do agree with you with regard to the use of the structure as a garage and not a residence. But my last question, given what we just heard from the applicant's attorney about 10.2, nonconforming structures, and 10.3, which you referred to, who, which, who is now correct? That's probably not a correct question.
That's a question to ask a lawyer.
No, I'm not going to ask it, never mind. I will not ask that question. I am not going to ask that question. I'll figure that out on my own.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Just, in your argument, in the case in Wareham, they abandoned their right as residents. This property never had that right as a resident, or it never was a resident, so to suggest that they abandoned it, I think would be improper.
Well, if they never had it, I'll settle for that.
Well, you just said it was abandonment. I mean, you can't have it both ways.
Any use, any potential-
Well, I haven't abandoned anything, it's still there.
Yeah, they haven't abandoned the structure. But the use of that lot-
Now, but if he, okay.
For residential purposes, was abandoned back in 1953.
That would be true if he tore the structure down.
No.
I mean, we, we had one here a month ago where the place was a derelict in West Falmouth. But they had to allow, keep it up in order to retain their existing nonconforming use. He cannot rebuild a garage there, the current zoning doesn't allow it. That was there long before zoning. I, again, I just don't see how we can deny this man the right to use his property.
Madam Chair, I'll be short. If the applicant's attorney is correct in 10.2, is what needs to be applied here versus 10.3, it says right here, "Pre-existing nonconformities, pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, or changed only by special permit from the zoning board of appeals," which of course, it's our judgment to do that and not do that, using our best judgment reading this. "Any such change, extension, or alteration should not be substantially more detrimental." It's house, it's definitely not more detrimental to the neighborhood and to the existing nonconforming uses of the structure. Then again, it goes on, this is what I love about our bylaws. Paragraph 2 says, now we're referring to not structures, but residential structures. So now, I think this board has to say, decide what is the right application of 10.2. And this is definitely not, which is why I agree with you, this is definitely not a residential structure, it's simply a structure.
Right.
Okay.
That's right. And I'm not saying, although I haven't told anyone yet, I'm not saying that they can't build a better garage.
They can't.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that-
They cannot.
Well, in fact, they can under this.
Well, they can't build another garage.
They can't build an accessory structure without a primary dwelling. So they're not allowed to rebuild that. This is their only-
From what I understand, they're, they're using it as part of their ownership of the house on Grand Avenue.
They're two separate lots. He can own 11 pieces of property. That shouldn't have any effect on what decision we make.
No, but I think, I thought someone-
They're not joined together legally in any way, shape, or fashion.
No. And I don't think they necessarily have to either abut or be across the street. They're claiming that the, and if they're, if that's not the case, then I think their situation is worse. But I think the suggestion was that because they own, bought, you know, property on Grand Avenue-
45.
Yeah, that this is somehow accessory to that. If it's not, then I think they're definitely, this lot is, again, floating out there on its own with no connection of any kind to a principal residence.
But there's, nobody's saying there's any connection to any principal residence. I mean, you're just making that assumption. I mean, he can go out and buy nine other houses in the neighborhood and do whatever he wants with them.
That's right. But the question is-
Why is this particular lot limited in your mind? I, it just doesn't register with me.
I'm not saying it's, it's limited. The point is, is it, is it buildable? Does it, is it a buildable lot? Or have they lost their rights through abandonment, through the owner's decision back in 1953 to make this a place to park cars and not to build? That's, that's the question.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, through you. Attorney Kirk, as I say, this document came in late, but I guess from my perspective, I'm not an attorney, so I would like to have town council weigh in on Attorney Kirk's position here on abandonment, so we, at least for me, I could get some additional guidance on-
It's a good idea.
The standing of it or not.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
While we were discussing this, I looked at the definition of abandonment in our zoning bylaw, and it seems to be a little different than your representation. It's the sensation of a use or structure accompanied by an intent to abandon and conduct or one or more voluntary acts, whether affirmative or negative, evidencing an intent to abandon. Now, you're saying that if you elect to put a garage on a lot, that's abandoning the right to put a residence on the lot. Just a general statement. But under our bylaw, that in order to abandon something, it has to exist. There has, for example, if you have a gas station and you stop using it, you abandon it. But it exists. So I don't know how you can say you're abandoning something that doesn't exist.
It's the use.
Well, the use is, there's no use.
No cessation.
This has been no abandonment, that garage can still be used.
You can't stop if you didn't start.
Prior to their deciding to use that lot as a parking garage, I believe they had a right to use that land for residential purposes.
When did that cease?
They still do.
And that, well, that, that's the question.
That's for our decision.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, we're certainly going to read everything you submitted. But it looks to me like that one of the issues in abandonment is there has to be an intent to abandon. And if somebody does something by accident, do they have an intent to abandon? I don't know.
Well, I don't think when you build a garage on the lot across the street that you own, it's not an accident.
What if it was a 40,000-square-foot lot that they built that garage on, whatever year it was built?
Well, I suppose that would at least qualify for, you know, your current area requirements.
It wouldn't have to be here. Yeah, but I mean, it's, that's unhold water with me.
Any other further questions for Attorney Kirk before-
No.
-Tony Clower comes up? You guys will sit up here? Thank you.
So, just a few, a few comments, if I may.
I still haven't gone to the rest of the public yet, too.
Okay. Would you like to go to the public first?
I was just thinking.
Yeah, why don't you go to the public first?
Anybody else from the public want to speak on this? Sorry, Attorney Clower, I just thought I should.
I'm Larry Sullivan, I'm the owner of the property. And I just wanted to clear up a couple of issues you guys have been having the whole time, last time, this time. But as far as parking, you keep saying, I use it as a parking lot. When I bought Grand Ave, Melrose came with it. There's also a lot at the corner of Tower House in Wyoming, and I can fit four cars there. It's got big trees that hang over it. So the only time I'll park in Melrose is I try to keep my truck 100% sprawl all the time. So if I were to park it for a day or two in that parking lot on Tower House, it gets all covered with tree sap and stuff, so I'll park it at the garage. But the garage is not used as far as parking or anything else. I keep my lawnmower in there. I have a nice car that sits inside it, and other than that, it's not used. I'm a nice guy, so when 4th of July comes or the road race comes, people say, can I park somewhere? Tab at it. I can fit probably six or seven cars in there. But that's the only time it's really used for parking. And as far as the water goes, I might look like a pretty face, but that's what I do. So I work in mud all day long. And the rim elevations in those two catch basins in the street are higher than the berm that's there now. So those catch basins in a light rain won't see any water at all, it runs right through down the berm to the house and out the other side. So, the intent of putting the bigger berm there is fine. If you want us to show elevations of what's there and what we'll put there, that's fine. If the town wanted to take the catch basins that are there and put four inch instead of six inch in there, they would do it too. Either way, it'll happen. The proposed garage floor is higher than the garage floor now, so my complaint of having the berm there when they put it in the first time, that the car couldn't get over the berm-
It's gone.
It'll go away because now I'm at a different elevation, it's a slight slope going down, it's not so bad. And it's my intention to fix that berm anyways because I don't want the water coming down to me. And what's on the proposed plan, that garage now, I mean, I can contain all my own water, that's not an issue. The water that's coming down the street is ridiculously, it's a lot. So, what they put out there with the double catch basins, if that's designed properly and it takes it, that'll be fine. But that's it, that's one of the, those problems keep coming up. The parking, again, I have that lot up the street, so it's not an issue.
So, how much higher do you intend on making that berm as opposed to what it is now?
Right now, it's probably three-quarters of an inch lower than- Right now, it's probably three quarters of an inch lower than the rim.
Yeah.
So either you change the framing grates on the catch basins, or they're now the six inch ones that are sitting right on the, the pre-cast. And put four inch ones in there. Or I just take it and give it a two inch berm along the side. Or even maybe I put granite at the end of the driveway, cobblestones or something to give it an edge, make them an, an, a house.
So you could, because I, I've been down there several times when it rains. I was really, after they showed us the, the video last time of the water running into the guy's window. And I mean, I've seen people deal with that by just taking an old rubber hose and putting it in the street. And it takes care of a fair amount. And I mean, that's what, an inch and a quarter? So what you're going to do is going to, it's certainly going to take care of 50% of the problem.
Right.
Easily.
And that pipe that he was showing you out of the wall, I took a, I have pictures of it somewhere. I was looking for it on my phone today. I couldn't find it. But that was running three quarters of a pipe, a four inch pipe, blowing out into the sidewalk in a rainstorm. So there's a lot of water coming down there.
Oh, yeah.
And then the house right across the street has.
It's down too from that.
It's like 80%. It's all, all asphalt. So you get that, and it's on a slope coming down. So you get, you get a lot of water coming in there. But again, if those two catch basins are designed properly, they should be able to handle it.
So one quick question, since you know what you're talking about here. As far as those two wells that you have designed currently, is, is that handle a five inch rainstorm? Or volumetrically, how did you arrive at the size of those?
Well, that's the, the PE stamp on that.
Yeah.
But it's, that's to take the, the leaders off the gutters in the house.
Okay.
And they put the extra, I don't know if you saw them, there's two little drains on the lot. That's to take supposedly whatever's going to, if it comes over the berm.
Okay.
Look them down there and catch that before it goes over the other wall and gets into the back.
Appreciate that.
And the backyard's leveled out now too, so it's not so much of a, you know, gushing water running out there. That should, that should take some of the water there also.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, any questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment on this project? Come on up. Name an address, please.
My name is Brian Healy, 7 Vernon Avenue. So I'm diagonally back to the, back to the property in question. So I've just got a couple of concerns. One is that the, this, even though the project has been scaled back, I still think that the height of it, it's going to overlook my property. It's, it's the, their property is on a slight hill from where I am. So it's going to be overlooking my property and, you know, my privacy is not going to be what it is currently. Okay? The second concern I have is regarding noise. So upper we are, I don't know what the, what the reason is, but noise travels up in that area. And I don't know why. I don't know what the scientific reason for it is. I don't know whether it's because we're slightly on a hill or whether it's because of the sea breezes or whatever it is, but noise travels. So as everybody's already said today, this whole area is very tight with, with properties, one up against the other. Okay? We already have some noise issues on Vernon Avenue. And as I say, it's, it's a problem. So with this project, they want to have a deck out back which faces towards my house. And there's going to be inevitably a certain amount of noise. Okay? So they were the two things. The other, the one other thing that I just want to say is, I don't quite follow some of what I heard tonight about the logic of, you know, the whole place is overbuilt and it's very congested. So let's make it more congested. I don't quite understand that logic. Okay?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Sure.
When you talk about noise and it traveling, there are ways of mitigating it. One is not build a house, but one way of doing it. Would a compromise be for you with regard to overlooking the property? And I can understand why you, I was just looking at the deck in the back. What if the applicant was to plant a row of Western red cedars, let's say, something that grows very thickly and very tall? They grow up to 40, 60 feet. Would that suffice?
Well, the, I have that situation on the front of me where on Vernon Avenue, 12 Vernon Avenue, they've built, they've grown twice, two layers of those trees. Okay? And it just isn't mitigating the noise.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's a, it's a good idea, but I'm afraid in practice, it's not working.
I'm just looking for a compromise.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Attorney Clower, you're at bat.
Just a few points, Madam Chair. Attorney Kirk spent some time talking about the lots of five, lots five and seven on Melrose. Those lots have been merged and are currently the property known as Five Melrose directly across the street. As we talked about at the prior hearing, this lot, Lot Number Eight, has never been owned in common ownership with any of the adjoining lots. And that's going back to the development of this, of the Falmouth Heights neighborhood in the 1800s. So this has never been merged with an abutting property, has never been used in connection with an abutting property. And a property across the street is not considered an abutting property. You can't merge with a property across a way in that sense. You know, I think Attorney Kirk was talking about that this is an untethered lot, and I think that's exactly right. This is, we have a lot that is not connected to any of the surrounding properties, has a non-conforming use in that it is an accessory structure without the benefit of a primary. However, there is a structure. The structure is there. There's, there's no question about that. It's the use that is non-conforming. And what we're proposing is to take this non-conforming use and to alter it to a conforming use. And I struggle to see how the board could find that the change from a non-conforming use to a conforming use is substantially more detrimental. Under Attorney Kirk's logic, you know, any undersized lot, whether with a house or not, would be rendered unbuildable if we had to look at 240 10.3. Because, you know, if we had any lot that was less than 7,500 square feet, which are a huge number of lots within the heights, those would be rendered unbuildable if we had to look at that provision for all, any lot of that size. So, so we don't. We look at, does the lot have an existing structure? And we have a structure. You know, as I said, that's not reviewed for changes to non-conforming structures on smaller lots in other circumstances. So I think if you were to apply it here, it would need to be applied to every circumstance where there's a lot of under 7,500 square feet. And, and I don't think that's a road we want to go down because it would render many of these lots unbuildable that have existing homes. Other people with lots of 3,900, 3,700, 3,500, 3,000 square feet, there's lots of them in the area, you know, would be in a very similar circumstance. The garage is accessory to a residential use. There is no primary. So I just think it's important to note that it, it's not paid parking. It's not a commercial endeavor. It is, it is still residential in nature. And then relative to the abandonment, there's a long history of case law. The Dial-Away case is among them. The Chiara Loos case seems to be a successor to those that hold that when you have an existing structure that is torn down and some period of time goes by, and then you apply for a building permit, it is rendered unbuildable. The Dial-Away case was a 21-year situation or 23-year situation. The Chiara Loos case was a nine-year situation. In both of those situations and in many of this chain of case law, it's when you have a structure that is removed in some period of time. Again, so we've got nine, we've got 23. We have the structure. The structure is still there. It has not gone away. And again, we have this structure. What we have is a non-conforming use. We're simply making, seeking to make that non-conforming use conforming. And they've redesigned this house in order to try to address the concerns of the neighbors, address the comments of the board, members of the board who weren't comfortable with the last proposal. And I think they've done so in a way that is meaningful and allows them to use this as it was intended to be used in the first place. So those are my comments. I'd be happy to address any other questions. The board may have.
Any other last questions, Attorney Clower?
I have a quick question. So under the definition for abandonment, is it, is it true that this structure has not, has been used for the last two years?
Mm-hmm.
I think I'm bringing that correctly.
Mm-hmm.
So you can say definitely that this structure's been used for the last two years? Has a, someplace to park cars?
Well, I mean, it's, it's been used as storage. You know, there's stores.
Got a car in there.
I just, I just.
Yeah, no, it has been used, and it was used by, by the Baltas prior to that.
You know, Mr. Duffy brought up the, the definition, and I was asking that question. It's the last sentence in that definition. Okay. Thank you.
How far would one have to travel in that neighborhood to find a house that meets all the setback requirements?
I don't think there is one.
Including everyone that's complaining?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there is one.
I don't think there is either.
I've done a lot of special permits in the Heights. And every permit we do in the Heights has setback and lot coverage non-conformities. As we talked about, Mr. Duffy, you, you, I think you seemed surprised when you saw the average lot coverage in the Heights is 30.5%. That's an average. And, and I've seen structures that are 70% lot coverage in the Heights. We're proposing 20.37% lot coverage.
I think it just demonstrates how much Mr. Sullivan's willing, how far he's willing to go. He meets all the setbacks. He's 20.3% lot coverage. Is that what it was?
20.37. And there will be, you know, there are benefits to this project outside of Mr. Sullivan getting to build what he would like to build. There, there will be a significant improvement to the drainage along Melrose Avenue. There, as Mr. Fox attested, there is a significant problem with the Arnstein, Arnstein property. And this will allow that to be addressed in a meaningful way.
And one might suggest that, seeing how this is part of what Mr. Sullivan does for a living. If he were to find out that it didn't quite do what everybody wanted to, the chances are fairly well that he would make efforts to mitigate that further, I would think. He seems like quite a reasonable gentleman.
I think, I think that is an accurate statement, Mr. Finnery.
Madam Chair, one last question. Why shouldn't this board consider that this new structure is completely out of character with the rest of the neighborhood based on its size?
The only potential way you could find that is if you said it was too small.
Well, you're not going to make this more non-conforming, so you.
So, I mean, the, you know, in terms of, in terms of lot size, we've established that there are many lots nearby.
Let me go back to that because that didn't answer my question. We, I don't believe are supposed to look at architectural style. Am I correct, Madam Chair?
No, we are, and it has.
Character of the neighborhood.
All right. So now I can go forward. And why should we not consider it substantially more detrimental? Because it does not conform, even come close to what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. It is very small, the architect, although I like the architecture, it just does not fit. Why, why should we not consider that?
So I think that it is very much, I, I don't think it's accurate to say that it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. I think that we've talked about the fact the Heights has a lot of varied architectural styles. You have much more, I don't know, I don't want to call them gingerbread style houses up at the top of Tower, Circle of Crown Ave up there. And then you have, you know, just a variety of styles looking through the Heights. And this is, this is not out of character with that variety of styles. But I also think, you know, while, while architectural consideration is an aspect of things, you have to look at, at the, you know, lot size and proposed house. And what we're showing here is, you know, a, a house that is not out of character.
May I just go back to what you just said? Can I do this?
Go ahead. You go.
You, now we have to get, I just want to make sure I understand something. You're now referring to properties, you know, all around the Heights. We're only concerned with the neighborhood. Are you considering that the entire Heights are this part, are this neighborhood?
So when we look at the neighborhood in terms of lot size comparison, we have houses on Circular Ave, Crown Ave, Fairmont, Grand, Melrose, Tower House, Vernon, and Wyoming. That's a 300-foot radius from this property. And that's what we've historically used when we do these lots, lot comparison worksheets. And I think that if you were to go up and down those streets, you'd see a variety of architectural styles. And when we look at the standards, you know, is it income, is it out of character with the neighborhood? I, I don't think you can say that. And, and I think when you, when you look at this lot comparison worksheet, yes, this is a smaller house, but they shouldn't be punished for that.
I would never want to, you know that, we wouldn't want to do that.
All right, I think we've wrapped it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a reminder, could we have that question posed to town council?
Yes.
So we'd have to continue this.
Can we agree what the question is? Did you write it down?
I was just have her weigh in on.
Is the property considered abandoned?
On abandonment.
Okay, all right.
I don't see.
Can I move this application be continued to the 17th of July?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. July 17.
Be like Groundhog Day, huh?
Thank you. We appreciate your time and everyone's patience tonight.
All right, now, next at bat and last at bat is 65 Cypress Street. Thank you for your patience, Cypress Street people.
Okay. This is application 029 of the year 2025. Scott Lutz has applied to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240 10.2A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 65 Cypress Street in T-Ticket. The property is located in an RSC zoning district. It's in the Great Pond Coastal Pond overlay district. It's also noted to be in a search and rescue overlay district. The existing single-family dwelling is 1,234 square feet. It has three bedrooms. The proposed single-family dwelling will be 1,190 square feet and have four bedrooms. The flood zone is designated X. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decision of record. This lot is 4,800 square feet in the zoning district, which currently requires 40,000 square feet. It has 60 feet of frontage in a district which currently requires 100 feet of frontage. Cypress Street is a public right-of-way at this location. The current lot coverage by structure is 25.71%. It will be, according to the plans, 24.76%. The limit is 20, but we are allowed by special permit to permit up to 25%. The average lot coverage by structure in the neighborhood, according to the worksheet, is 23.3%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 32.2%. Would be increased to 39.76%, which is close to the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. There are two, the current property has two noted non-conformities. It is setback 8.2 feet from the street. That's a non-conformity. 25 is required. And the westerly property setback is eight feet, 10, 10 feet is required. The other dimensions conform. The height of the proposed structure is represented to be 27 feet, 10 inches. The engineering referral, they have recommended a driveway permit, erosion, and soil sediment control. The board of health notes that the property is on the Falmouth Public Sewer. Conservation has advised us they have no comment, fire no comment, assessors no comment, planning board no comment, building no comment. Wastewater also noted that they're on the sewer, and the water department recommends a one-inch PE service with a meter inside the house. There are no letters in opposition and no letters of support in the file.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lutz.
Thank you, Madam, and I'll try to be quick. I'm, I'm a 21-year resident here in Massachusetts, but obviously you hear an accent from North Carolina. Raised my family here. My son and I purchased this property earlier this year with the intent to, to raise a new home in this place. As you saw, probably as you visited there, the existing structure is failing in, in many regards. And, you know, it is not livable in its current condition. As you stated, it's a three-bedroom structure with a deck, large deck, and a shed covering the 1,200 square feet. You mentioned 1,234 and 25.7% lot coverage. I understand the 20% requirement and, you know, your approval up to 25%. This lot is a standard 4,800 square foot lot there with 60 feet width at the street, street side and 80 feet deep. The existing setbacks, as you mentioned, also have some of the non-conformity. So we have lot coverage non-conformity. And then the west side, as you stated, goes from about 8.2 or 3 feet to 9 and 1/2 feet. And then the front street setback is about 8.2 feet from the street. So we're going to improve these non-conformances in several ways. On the west side, the proposed structure will move to 10.3 feet off the west side.
structure will move to 10.3 feet off of the west side. We'll run parallel with that. We are removing the existing shed from the back of the house and lot premises. On the street side, we'll, we'll improve from eight feet of setback to 10 feet of setback. And the overall lot coverage improves from 25.7 to 24.76, again, at about 1,188 and 1/2 square feet of total lot coverage with the proposed structure. We are proposing some adjustment to the driveway, crushed stone parking area and driveway. This new proposal will be offset from the east side lot line by approximately five feet. If you saw the lot staking, you noticed that there is a house. It's actually a rental home that's about 1.2 feet to 1 and 1/2 feet off of the east side lot line. My intent there is to offset the driveway, you know, like cobblestone or something with a five-feet sort of section there and, and probably have some kind of shrub or planting there kind of buffer, to try to buffer that side of the house more so. Let's see. That does, that does adjust the total lot coverage when you include the, the paving and, there's no paving, but the crushed stone plus the dwelling will increase the, the square footage to 1908 or 39.7% of lot coverage. So, so just under the 40% with the driveway. The new proposed dwelling is four-bedroom, will be connected to the, to the town sewer system. The overall height, as you mentioned, is, is just designed at just under 28 feet, but with the elevation about two feet, will be at about 30 feet from grade up to peak of the roof, well below the 35-foot minimum. We are including dry wells in the drawing, in the proposed drawing to catch all the water runoff piped down from the, from the downspouts of, of the roof itself. The, this proposed dwelling is consistent in size and finish with the neighborhood. The new structure does not impact views and vistas from, from the public ways. I have spoken in person to the abutting neighbors, the two abutting neighbors on either side of the house, east and west, and then across the street. Those three neighbors, one neighbor on the corner actually inherited, actually inherited the house from the father that owns five of the properties, one that immediately abuts me, and two that are across, but I've met them and talked through what I was doing. Basically, I feel like I have great neighbor support in terms of what we're doing. They're really welcoming both the removal of the existing structure, but the cleanup of lot and, and the proposed new plans. Further to the neighborhood, I leverage the WebPro and GIS map data to analyze the dwelling and structure coverage for 15 abutting lots. The average coverage for those dwellings and structures included was 23.3%. 12 of those 15 exceeded our 20% coverage rule. Five of those 15 exceeded 25%. So again, I'll be just under 25% at 24.7. The zoning board of appeals, as you also mentioned, had reached out to the various town departments. I'm, I'm aware, has actually has provided the input from the Department of Engineering, some things related to the sewer permits, the water, when we, when we tear down, et cetera, applying for those permits, ensuring that we change the water, the sewer capping during the construction, et cetera. Also, the engineering department's asking for the driveway permit and bond. I'm familiar with that, having raised my own construction in, on 109 Madeleine Road. So very familiar with some of these processes. And I'll also be following the town's soil and erosion, soil erosion and sediment control during the construction. I'd just like to thank you for your consideration of this permit to raise and rebuild on this site.
Thank you for reaching out to the neighbors, too. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Mark, you want to start off?
Um, yeah, sorry for knocking your stake over.
I fixed it for you.
I just drove around and I...
Scott fixed it for you.
But, no, I mean, if there's a house in the neighborhood that needs this or you, this is the one. It's funny, I'd never noticed that house before, but it needs some noticing. But, no, good luck.
Thank you.
No, same comment. I was just leafing back to the pictures that I took of it. So it's due time, quite honestly.
It needs some loving.
Yeah, it needs some loving. So I appreciate the information you gave us here tonight. And best of luck, hopefully, after we can finally get to a vote on this.
Frank, here we are.
No further questions.
Tony?
No further questions.
Just make the motion for me, Frank.
Public. Maybe Mr. Fox wants to speak.
Maybe his son wants to say. We'll clean this house up.
Young man, ready to get the shovel out.
Do you want to, do you want to say something seriously?
I was saying, he's built another house in Falmouth, and he's done a great job with it. Say similar thing. House was falling down, and made it nice and beautiful.
We love that. We like it.
Need to do much to improve on that.
You okay? The dad, you okay?
I move continuous to the 17th of July.
We'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All set up here? No discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We, we felt we were under some timeline getting here, right? And knew we need to go through this process. But I understood at the beginning tonight, the continuation. I understand that. Is there any, is there any ruling, or is there any avenue to help us understand that this would be approved, assuming, I know there's like a two-week appeal period by the neighbors, et cetera? Is there any, is there anything that you can share with me before the 17th that enables us to maybe...
If there was any problem, you would have heard it.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, you would have heard it from us.
Yeah, there's nothing really.
Uh, I would suggest you have very little to worry about.
Yeah. We'll probably vote that night, I would assume. This is all an assumption.
It's only because...
Then it gets clocked with the clerk's office, and then there's a 20-day appeal period.
There's a 20-day period after the July 17?
After the clocking in, yeah. But you can start, I probably should make them on, to do stuff at your own risk.
I can do, I can pull permits to...
Demo.
With every, I can do demo. You're just saying I can't pull a permit to start the construction.
Yeah, until the 20 days, yeah.
But everything's done at your risk.
Yeah. But I mean, you can pull some of that stuff off that hose and you could start...
I would, I would say your risk is about zero.
Minimal. Anyway, did we vote?
Yes, first, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. I didn't think we voted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
All right, moving along. Are we doing those minutes at the 10?
Yeah, we understand.
I'll make a motion to, did everybody read April 10?
I, I did, actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 10. I will need a second.
Second.
Everybody all set on those?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Any board discussion? I have one. Where's Jim?
I texted him.
Did you? No answer?
No, I haven't.
I hope he's okay. All right, board updates.
I'm hungry.
Mark's hungry. Future agenda items, our next meeting, our next meeting is on June 12. Mark?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.